Yes, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority. And today is Thursday, May 27, 2021, and 3:30. And next, if we could have roll call.
Director Abrika.
Here.
Director Combs. Director Bird.
Here.
Director Pine.
Here.
And it does not appear that Director Kremmons is in attendance.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, everyone, for attending. And if we could have, next item is approval of the agenda. And, you know, given the tragedy that has occurred, maybe we could adjourn the meeting with a minute of silence on the all the people in San Jose and their families. But entertain a motion or approval of the agenda.
So moved. And Chair Abrika, if I may, in case anyone is able to attend it, there will be a vigil at 6 o'clock this evening at San Jose City Hall.
Okay, thanks for the info. Okay, I believe we did have a motion and a second, so if we can take a vote through roll call.
Director Abrika.
Yes.
Director Combs.
Yes.
Director Bird.
Yes.
Director Pine.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, motion carried on the agenda. Our next item is two sets of minutes, and I was going to make a suggestion for the minutes of the retreat. So let me start with that and see if there are any other comments or adjustments. So so I think it's definitely been an improvement. We moved away from very descriptive minutes to more action many minutes. But I feel like in the case of the retreat, if somewhere we could incorporate as part of the minutes, the summary that was made by our facilitator, you know, in the sense, because if people look up the minutes, what happened at this meeting? There are a few comments from the public, but anyway, so maybe our attorney can comment on that. But I think if there, if in the actual minutes, there's a clause that says the report is incorporated as part of the record. Another thing I was looking at was number seven, where it says near term actions and directions. You know, the board, in a way, I think we did sort of, I think we did identify certain priorities for this year. That was kind of the entry, so we don't have to list everything. But anyway, that that's my suggestion. If any other board members have any ideas on that, how to capture the results of the, I know we do have it for discussion later on, but in terms of, you know, what happened at that retreat session.
And just to answer your question, Chair Abrika, you, you know, the the minutes can be at the board's discretion. So whatever the board chooses to include in their minutes is is fine. And if you wanted to make reference to the report, that would be fine, too.
To be included in the minutes.
Correct, you could you could include the report in the manner that you see deem as appropriate.
Okay. Any other comments, or does that seem okay to do that is?
The staff will take that as an action item to incorporate the summary of the meeting outcomes, the retreat outcomes into the minutes.
Yes, I guess that is, if there's no objections to that, it sounds like that that is kind of what I'm suggesting.
So the idea is to attach the summary notes?
Yes, so that, again, you know, somebody happens to look at what happened at the retreat, and they don't really look at the rest of our packet today, they would get an idea of the results. Or this was, they're kind of like minutes in a way, they're notes.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, any other questions or comments on both sets of minutes? And if not, then I would entertain a motion for approving that.
So move. I'll second.
Okay, within second, and I believe Director Kramer has just joined us. I think I saw his name, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, he's here, yeah, okay. All right, so let's do roll call.
Director Abrika.
Yes.
Director. Director Combs.
Yes.
Director Bird.
Yes.
Director Kremen.
Yes.
Director Pine.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, our next item, number four, is opportunity for the public. So this is public comment, opportunity for any member of the public who may wish to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. And you have up to three minutes. If Miko, anybody requesting at this point, or?
I don't have any public comments, and I don't see any hands raised at this moment.
Okay, sounds like there are no comments at this point. So we'll move to the regular business and have the, we'll start out with. So this is item five, information items. We'll start with the executive director's report, and I've handed over to our director, Margaret.
Thank you, Chair Abrika. So we'll walk briefly through our update for this month. Project updates for Reach Two. We are continuing to evaluate channel widening details. Those include hydraulic modeling of various scenarios or the channel widening scenarios. Our designs are at the 30 to 50% stage. So we are still looking at optimum or optimal locations and details for where and how to conduct that channel widening work. We continue to work with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and you have an action item on your agenda this afternoon for the feasibility study cost share agreement. We are coordinating with Valley Water, who is the grant requester of Record with CAL OES and FEMA for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, grant for the Pope Chaucer Bridge. As you may recall, we learned that there is no longer a $3 million cap on that particular grant. We are exchanging information with CAL OES for evaluating opportunities to increase the the dollar size of that grant and further close the the funding gap, particularly in this case for the Pope Chaucer Bridge. Also, with regard to Pope Chaucer Bridge, we continue to evaluate the bank slope and treatments around the bridge, understanding what needs to be cut and what needs to be filled to make sure that the bank is stable and it's protective of the bridge. And the bank treatment is also protective of the bridge, but also, if possible, a more natural look and protective of mortaries. That that evaluation is ongoing. We are continuing to communicate with One Shoreline and Sand Hill Properties regarding a number of issues. And among them, property access and easements for properties and parcels that are impacted by our project site work. So access areas, egress areas, materials staging and lay down areas and the work. So probably of most interest to the board today. As you recall, we had a funding gap table from the Santa Clara Valley Water District. Valley Water's total construction costs are in the range of $38 million. Working with staff among us, we are, we considered all of the other potential funding requirements. It includes things like, you know, the the legal requirements that you have to go through for easements and access, utility relocations and associated costs. And our total project cost estimate is about $40.4 million. We have a total project funding amount identified presently at about $32 million, leaving at present a gap of between $8 and $5 million. There are possible changes to this. And as we proceed through this process over time, as our engineering and design progresses, as we work with the Army Corps of Engineers and with CAL OES, these numbers and details will shift. So some of the possible changes include shifting money, if possible, from Site Five to match an expanded HMGP grant for Pope Chaucer Bridge. To do this, we would defer Site Five and the match that would, we would be able to move some of that money dedicated to Site Five to match the expanded grant. And then the balance of the match could be used for other channel widening work. That is very much contingent upon our analysis, and we are having some assistance from our good partners at Valley Water to evaluate the feasibility and to do all the due diligence necessary for Site Five, whether or not we can actually defer that work. We believe we have the hydraulic capacity at the bridge, but we want to make very sure that if we do not do that particular channel widening work, it doesn't have ramifications elsewhere in in Reach Two. So we are continuing to evaluate that opportunity. So moving further upstream, as you know, we have been collaborating with Stanford University, Reach 300 Year Flood Protection, evaluating detention basins. There are two locations. As you know, there's one that we've talked about at Web Ranch and one at the Old Bothing Nursery. Both of these are being evaluated. One site may screen out and and drop out due to complications at that particular site. A draft conceptual plan will be presented to the board later this summer when we have more information. We look forward to sharing that with you right now, we're sure sharing that with you in the future, but right now it is still in the very draft, very conceptual stage. Further on Safer Bay, on our Bay Shoreline, we are working out a memorandum of understanding between the Memo Park Brick Grant Partners. That is progressing. Our Department of Water Resources grant for invoice number one is in process. We have been in communication with the folks at DWR, because this grant is rather old, and because DWR's processes have been delayed by pandemic impacts, their process is moving very slowly. We have sad news, we were not successful in our Prop 68 grant application. We continue to evaluate other grant opportunities and are prepared to jump on those as soon as they become available. And I I'm sure many of you heard recent media attention on sea level rise. KQED did a number of stories. And the South Bay, in particular, the Safer Bay Project and the communities of East Palo Alto, and to a lesser extent Memo Park, were focused in or featured in a couple of the reports from KQED. In your board packet, you will have, you have links to those those stories. And further, there's no news at the moment on the sequel lawsuit. And our website continues to be popular and gain popularity. And we are looking at transitioning, successfully transitioning our banking services, if not by the end of this month, by very early next month. And that will be a significant improvement in both customer service and in reduced banking fees and costs. And that's, let's see, and I think that's it on the director's report. Any questions?
Yeah, board members, any questions or comments on any of the items? And then we can go to the public if there are any. Okay. Do we have any requests from the public? Not hearing any.
I've not received any requests. I see no hands raised.
All right. Okay, then we can go on to.
I think I see.
Director Bird has a comment.
Okay.
Thanks, just a quick question. The negotiations with Sand Hill, is that going satisfactorily?
We have, yes, we have a very, in fact, Kevin and I had a very convivial conversation with them just this afternoon. And they are willing and open and and eager to continue working with us. We are doing, working on how, looking at the overlay of our project locations, our work locations, the project footprint and their property locations. We are having initial conversations about how we might cooperate with them to incorporate top of bank parklets on some of their properties, if that's appropriate. So yes, it's it's a very positive and collaborative conversation.
Great, and then on the Newell Bridge, there was a question a few months ago about the timing alignment with the city of Palo Alto on that. Can you give us a little bit of an update on how that's going?
Sure. I, in fact, I spoke with Michelle Jeremiah in Hollywood yesterday afternoon. And we are all still working on the optimistic scenario that Pope Chaucer is going to construction in 2024, because Newell is going to construction in 2023.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or questions?
I see that Ms. Hammer has raised her hand.
Yes, thank you, hello. Thank you very much. So I saw in the packet that there was a comment that Pope Chaucer permitting is in process and permit applications are being submitted. And then there was a note that Newell Road Bridge permits are submitted, being submitted together with Pope Chaucer. And I was wondering how that is being done. And, you know, we obviously want both projects to move forward as quickly as possible. And does that help with the timeline? So I'd love to hear your comments and thoughts on that.
Sure, great, thank you, great question. We are looking at similar projects, of course, two bridges, work in the creek, many of the same issues, and for the purposes of our permitting with the regulatory agencies, particularly with the Regional Water Quality Control Board, we would be basically sending similar information to, if we didn't combine them, to two different people in the same agency. So if we combine it, we're working with the same person submitting similar information on a similar timeline and helping our regulatory agency partners by streamlining this process for and with them. So it helps us move both projects forward with less confusion or chaos or opportunity for disjuncture, because we're working with one regulatory agency representative and coordinator rather than multiple points. So we are on track to provide the regional board with draft permit information in July and submit our final permit information in September.
Okay, thank you.
I think Jerry Hearn has a comment.
Yes, thank you. Margaret, that's, that's a great plan. You know, combining them and for efficiency sake, and it'll be interesting to see if that works out well. Since they're two different, well, they're related, but different projects. But hopefully, that's a an approach that'll work in the future. I just had a quick question. You mentioned that you were in conversation with One Shoreline about some issues. And I'm just interested where, what they are and where are they? Maybe I missed that in your report.
We are in conversation, Len and I have spoken recently about the which parcels One Shoreline owns and where they are in relation to the project footprint. So like we are with Sand Hill Properties, making sure that we have a full inventory of the creekside project overlaying parcels and making sure that we are ready to embark on all the necessary surveys and appraisals and and other legal documentation necessary for easements and access.
Yeah, oh, I I guess I was just not aware that One Shoreline or the former Flood Control District actually owned property in there. So thank you, it'd be interesting to see where that is.
Right, yeah, I'm sure it's gonna, a process that's going to go smoothly. It's it's complex, because every parcel needs to be identified. And, you know, all of those detailed steps need to be taken care of. But but we're coordinating closely with Len for for that. I'm I'm sure it will just be a a detailed process, but we'll go fine.
Yeah, good, thank you.
I do have a couple of questions, if nobody else on the board has any right now. Let's see. Not seeing any, yes. Yeah, so Margaret, if, could you put the calendar? You know, the board agenda calendar on the screen, I think it is part of your regular report, but.
Agenda, oh, like the, yeah, hang on a second. That's gonna take me a moment to find, that's. Need to get out of full screen.
Yeah, just when I use it as a reference, otherwise my comments will be.
Okay. One moment, please.
You know, if not, I think the board, it's in our packet, and so.
Yeah, let me just, yeah, it's it's the, your, the schedule of meetings, upcoming agenda items, is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay. Just a second, I'll be there.
Yes, okay. Yeah, so just using this as a reference, and so I guess my comments will sort of jump around a little bit between our retreat and then recent meeting that took place. So and also just to confirm with the board, it, I think that in June we could have the first, if you remember, I think the roughly, there were like three, as I remember, and it is kind of three major things that surfaced as far as the board was concerned, this, you know, immediate priorities. One was the whole funding, you know, a plan for funding. The other one was having some conversation in terms of the different, well, kind of an update, and then looking at the intersection of the sea level rise in San Mateo County and and in our organization. So for June, I wanted to, if it's okay with the board, I think, I I think it would be good to start in June having the funding plan, at least have an outline of what that would look like. And as I remember, we were going to start looking at in in sort of elements or, you know, pieces, not necessarily finalizing it, but starting to look at all of that. So so I I guess I would propose that we do that in June, if that works with the board. And I think our director could prepare at least an initial outline of all the different elements involved. And anyway, that that's my, that's my proposal, and see what people think. Since we already get pieces of that, you know, here and there, but I think the sooner we start looking at it as a, you know, a plan and a strategy. Any comments on that or suggestions? I think Pat has his.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, we, I thought it was a good discussion at the retreat, and one of the dilemmas we were facing is, you know, to what extent should we try to negotiate a resolution to the funding gap that may or may not exist as we move forward in the coming months? And maybe a next step would not only be to have it broken down in just in a that clear way that Director Abrika was describing, but maybe also to just list at least the two scenarios, and maybe there are more scenarios on how to fill that gap and just have them in front of us. Not that we would be ready yet to pick a scenario, but that we remain clear on on what those are. And as as options get narrowed, then we refine those.
Yeah, the worst scenarios is helpful, good for me, helps, yeah, create some scenarios. Anybody else have any comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, this is, this is true. I'll just add again, I'll disagree, and mostly sort of piggybacking, I mean, just, you know, there is obviously a very specific funding scheme that we are working under with regards to the Reach Two projects. And so again, like I I have probably the least amount of history with with the GPA than anyone else. And so I I think it is, I completely understand where Director Bird is coming from. Let's not necessarily get into a contentious engagement, that that's not necessary. But but I think for me, and possibly members of the public, it could have some value, at least starting off and getting some sense of what exactly the current scheme is, right? And and what's some of the the reasoning behind it, right? Because because I certainly wasn't on the board when when that reasoning was laid out. And I know some of that is connected to the the prior downstream project that that the the JP completed. And so, again, like even if I'm totally here where where Director Bird is coming from, and and let's not you know, have to sort, or let's not necessarily have to feel that we need to resolve all issues. But I would just like to see more transparency and continued transparency with regards to the current scheme that we're working on. Because even in that that funding gap that that Margaret identified, again, even the funding that she has in place, there are gaps in there. So we're not, we're not completely losing all the gaps that exist. And so again, I I just would, again, I'll be supportive of of just continued transparency with regards to in in continued sort of exploration of some of the history behind how we got to the current scheme. Okay, any other comments or?
I, you know, I just would agree, it would be very helpful to refresh our memories on the, how we fund the, you know, the the Beta 101 stretch.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. Yeah, so and and I think starting in June would be good, again, you know, not, we're not going to be making decisions, but definitely refreshing ourselves, kind of a little bit of the history, and even what the current, you know, what the current plan seems to be, for lack of a better word, but I think that is what we need to, we need to come up, finalize some kind of plan at some point. Yeah, okay, all right, so that will be for June. And then and then just recently, I I asked to have a little short meeting just to, and that was with the Director Pine, but wearing his hat as the chair of the other entity, the Sea Level Rise Group, and our director and Len, to at least explore it. You know, what month might be good to do for the board? Do sort of like a study session in some way to begin also looking, having discussions on the the other issue that came up, which was the, again, sort of the intersection of the of the, you know, of of the San Francisco Creek and JPA, and then also the the sea level rise. And also, actually, because I was just noticing, and this one is scheduled here in September, but I think we need to also include the the water district, although obviously Gary's representing the water district. But looking at the, you know, the the bay in in both counties, so just kind of getting us up to speed on. getting us up to speed on on the different issues. David, that that's your recollection. I I we did say, right, I kind of, it is not just the county sea level rise and us, but we we need to look at the whole stretch, the whole.
Right, we, I mean, in the in the safer context, we wanted to look at both.
Yes.
At 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 both north and south.
Yes, right, okay. And so anyway, I just wanted one report that we had that you know, short meeting primarily just to try to see what would be a good month to give both Margaret and Len time to, you know, prepare some materials and give plenty of time to the public also, because I think there's great interest in that to to be present and for us to start also unpacking that with no decisions at that point, but down the line, there may be some decisions that will be, you know, have to be made in some way, so. So it would be more in the matter of a study session, I would, I would, I would say. So, yeah, so I guess that was the proposal from us, if it's okay with the board, and then for the and also just add and add the the Water District, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Shall we go back to the slides now?
Yeah, so I just want to see if there are any comments or questions on this and then and 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 then we can continue, yeah. So the board okay with that then? Well, okay. Okay, yes, we can go back to wherever we were, I forgot, but.
Back to where we were. Just one more information item. Last month, the board made changes to the final approved budget. And in your packet is the adjusted budget based on your approval that had the commensurate adjustments to things like benefit amounts and Miko can probably describe the other details more articulately than I can, but when you adjust a salary, there are other budget line items that change as well, and the changes in the information item you have reflect those additions.
Okay.
Go to full screen. Scroll down. And this is the first action item, the only action item on your agenda today. And Kevin can speak to this more completely than I can. This is a very important agreement, though, that's between ourselves and the Army Corps of Engineers to initiate the feasibility study. The cost share agreement that we'll be initiating confirms that the study will confirm the project design feasibility and its economic benefit. The cost agreement, the cost sharing agreement was approved for the upcoming fiscal year and I think we have a representative from the Army Corps of Engineers. Our point of contact, Jamie O'Halloran, is in attendance, and Kevin can answer any more specific details about next steps with the Army Corps of Engineers for anyone who has those questions.
Yeah, any, any questions or maybe just a quick refresher on what what this is. I know there's some report, but.
Yeah, maybe I can give a little more detail. So you'll recall that back in 2000, well, some of you may recall, if you were around back in 2005, we signed a feasibility cost share agreement with the Corps of Engineers for a general investigation, and that's a very, you know, intended to be a large scale investigation into civil works projects throughout the country, and it is managed by a local district of the Corps with a lot of oversight, vertical oversight through headquarters. This is a transition to a CAP 205 study, which is more of a localized study. It comes with a smaller price tag, $10 million, but it's a much more achievable effort, and we're recommending that we do complete that that transition at this time.
Okay, all right. So I know we have, well, welcome Jamie from the Army Corps, and if you have anything to add. And then we'll see if the board has something.
Thank you, Chair Abrika and Board members. Thanks for having me at the meeting, and we're looking forward to partnering again with the JPA and look forward to completing the study and moving forward with this portion of the project with you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Board members, any other questions or comments on it?
Director Bird.
Thank you. Yep, sorry, I had to get unmuted. Yeah, can you just refresh us on not only, so the study would be completed in 24 months, but then what would be the timeframe anticipated for funding and how that aligns with our project construction in the remaining phases? Where it would be applied, those funds if we receive them? And and how that would or would not fill the gaps we have?
Well, the $10 million that's identified from the federal government, part of that is used for the study and and design. The remainder can be used for construction, and we've, we have in one of our funding tables that I think we're gonna probably, we're being asked to share pretty soon, show how that's applied. It's actually included in some of our estimates. The 24 months is an estimate of completion. Typically, these take 36 months. But because we have so much existing information and a good partnership with the Corps of Engineers, we're hoping that we can get it done in 24 months to get to the study. When we get to construction, we're actually, well, let me take a step back. The portions of the project that will be included in the study are the channel widening sites, particularly sites one through four. There's a couple of reasons for that. They have independent utility, and we believe that they'll pencil out with a positive benefit cost ratio. They're currently underfunded. It would prevent the commingling of federal money from FEMA if we were to apply federal core money to the widening sites rather than to bridge replacement. And it actually fits in line with our schedule for construction, because if we can go to construction in a couple of years on the widening sites, that allows us a little more time which is proving to take a while to get construction on. Well, Chaucer, an important kind of detail is that if we complete the feasibility study and and the federal government has an interest in building the project, almost certainly the Corps would advertise for construction bids and manage construction of the project with close partnership for construction management between all of our agencies as needed. So that's kind of how it fits in the in the greater scheme of things. It's a very specific piece of our Reach 2 project, and that was done purposefully to avoid conflicts in construction scheduling and and like I said, the commingling of federal funding, which is, which is not allowed.
Thanks, that's real helpful. Now, if it is able to be done, the study done in 24 months, do we know what kind of a lag there is between study completion and funding and funds availability? And then related to that, I'll just toss out the other half to my question, is if the between the between the time needed for the study and then the lag time before we would receive funds, that doesn't align well enough with our construction schedule? Can, once, once we have had some milestone with this funding, either study completion or recommendation of approval, would it be possible to internally through member partners or whatever do bridge loans, or how might that align on the on the timing?
Well, the 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 reason I mentioned that this would be that would be the Corps of Engineers advertising for construction bids is because it's not, so this is, this is unlike a grant where we would receive funds and then spend those funds. The federal government would manage the construction, and they would also account all of the federal expenditures, and then we would be responsible for a local match. So I I don't have a a good answer on lag time per se. Jamie can if she has a good answer, can offer it, but I believe we'll have to work with the Corps on kind of how we map out scheduling to construction. Remember, we haven't actually begun the study yet. We need to you know, approve today, tonight at the at the board level, the execution of the FCSA, and then we'll begin to to build out that schedule, and we'll bring back and answer that question pretty soon.
So if Jamie has anything to add, that would be welcome. Do, am I construing it correctly then, that it might be that if we receive these funds for those discrete elements, that they would proceed somewhat on their own timeline? Hopefully, it would align with our anticipated timeline, but that that funding schedule might then drive the construction timeline of those elements of the project. Is that correct?
Well, un- unlike the general investigation, we don't need to return every year to request new money. It's, once it's approved, it's managed by the San Francisco District of the Corps using discretionary funds that are available to them through the Continuing Authorities Program. Likewise, with construction, we would not have to wait for a word of bill. It doesn't have to be congressionally authorized. It's funding that can be spent by the San Francisco District. And so there's not only the advantage of certainty of funding, there's a big advantage of timeliness because it doesn't require going back to Washington DC with a, and lobbying for another federal request.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for those explanations. Any other comments or questions, or if there are any requests from the public?
Well, just, just a quick comment I thought. That's a good idea, if a bridge loan situation. And so, but that's something I
I'm sorry, Chair Abrika, I didn't catch what that commenter said.
Oh, no, I didn't say anything. I think it was Gary who said.
Yeah, I didn't catch what he said.
Oh, sorry, I was just mentioning, I thought Councilperson Burke's idea was a really good idea, and I would be willing to run it flagpole at Valley Water, a bridge loan, if it's a timing issue.
Okay.
I think once we start working more details on this these scenarios of our funding plan, yeah, more and more things can be considered and so this is a good cost sharing idea that we have with the Army Corps, and I think it it's worked well with the up to now, and I see the reason why it wouldn't in the future, so. Okay, any, any comments from the public or questions? If not, this is an action item, so we'll need a formal motion, but.
I don't have any comments or any hands raised from the public.
Okay, well, if there are no comments, then I would consider it a motion for item 6A.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
And I will second it, and we need to clarify the content of the motion.
We would be looking for approval of our signing the feasibility cost share agreement.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so I've been moved and seconded. If we can have a roll call vote.
Director Abrika?
Ah, yes.
Director Bird?
Yes.
Director Pine?
Yes.
Director Combs?
Yes.
Director Kremen?
Yes.
Yes, okay, motion carried. You know, our next item, we already sort of talked a little bit about it, the results of the retreat, but we do have the summary notes and so if there are any questions or comments about this retreat follow-up. And Margaret already incorporated some things into the calendar, and that's why I brought him up over there at that point, but.
We hope we captured the summary of the retreat reasonably well. If there's anything that board members would like to have us either augment or clarify, this is a great time to do that. We'll consider them draft until you say that captures the contents and outcomes of the retreat sufficiently.
Yeah.
And further, to Chair Abrika's comment, that there were sort of three essential things that came out of the board priorities from the board retreat, and the first one was funding for Reach 2, as you have discussed. Also, the intersection of the JPA with Safer and its crossover into both Valley Water and One Shoreline remits, that's being teed up for a September discussion. And the third item being the status of Reach 2 permits. It's, did staff adequately capture those three priorities?
Yeah, it seems fine to me. I think even this summary is really more accepting the report, I guess. I, you know, earlier on, that's why I requested that it be incorporated into the minutes, and that was done, so you know, open it for any comments. If not, we can just keep moving, so. I think.
Okay, hearing that, moving on.
Heading downstream, right?
I'm sorry?
Keep heading downstream.
Or in this case, upstream? Yeah.
Okay. Yes, so well, our next item is any comments or information items from announcements, et cetera, from any board member?
Just a question, are we aware of the next Searsville group meeting and where that stands?
I have not been apprised of any announcements about the next meeting. I will certainly keep you all posted if I hear anything.
Yeah, thank you.
There there was an initial convening, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, it was a general convening and and we haven't heard yet for the next meeting yet.
Gary Hahn has a comment.
Yeah, I may make a comment to that. I think the timeline is they're actually thinking of going out for permits in the late fall, so I'm guessing last time I talked with anybody there, they were thinking that there might be another meeting in the early fall, late summer, probably early fall, September.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports, announcements, questions, if you know, if not, I well, I think Director Bird did make an announcement related to six. Director Bird, is that the announcement you made on a vigil taking place that is today, right?
Yes, 6:00 PM at San Jose City Hall Plaza.
Okay. Okay, well, it sounds like we have concluded our meeting, and perhaps we can just, you know, do a 30-second moment of silence for the tragic events. Okay, with that, then we'll adjourn our our meeting of the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority. Thank you, everybody, for joining in.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.